Call the meeting, the February 25th budget workshop meeting to order. Hi.
Order.
Hello.
All right. We have an agenda, but we also have an overnight field trip, so if you can start with that.
Absolutely, thank you. In your packet there is an overview. Our DECA team has made it to a conference or competition Thursday, Friday, and ending Saturday at the Heinz Convention Center in Boston for this week. We, this was unexpected. We didn't know that-
They'd win?
Yeah, that we'd qualify for this, which is really awesome. So, we're super, super proud of our students. And as you know, DECA is a new program at the high school. And Mr. Andrew Smith, our newest math teacher, is the coordinator for the club. And so, in your packet, you actually have a little bit of an overview about what it is, the competition is. You've got an overview of the agenda for the Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And then, you have a cost and funding breakdown in the back that goes through the overall expense of the trip and how it's broken down. We're really excited that it's looking as though it's only going to be about $96 per family because we've been able to cover the rest of the $4,219 through various ways, which is all laid out here in terms of how we were able to get the funding in place. So, all of that being said, we're looking for approval from the committee so that our students will be able to attend. There are about seven students that will be going on the trip and two staff. And Mr. Dudik will be, and I believe Mr. Duchesne will be making appearances on different days, so just check in and make sure that everything's fine. It'll just be in Boston, but-
Seven BMR students?
Yes.
If I'd shared with him.
Who's Vicky?
Oh, she's a parent. I'm sorry. Yes. Yep. Yes, Vicky DeCosta and Andrew Smith will be chaperoning the trip for the seven students. She's a parent.
She's a parent.
Yes.
I'll make them motion.
Okay, Wendy, any second?
Second.
Seconded by Tammy. Is there any discussion? Tammy, she, that was the lady we met at the conference, right? Who was telling us how great Andrew was at the-
This is the, this is the organization, correct? Yes. I thought you meant Ms. DeCosta. I was like, I don't think we met her, but I do know her.
No, no, no. Any questions, discussion, issues? Okay. Motion, there's been a motion to approve the DECA State Conference and I guess tournament, competitive tournament. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Right, I wish them great success. I, that's great. There you go. It's a go.
Thank you.
All right, now it's you, again.
All right. So, this evening, we are going to be hearing from two cost center managers as we continue to move forward through our FY '21 budget cycle. We are going to be talking with the Jills this evening, athletics and our learner services department. We'll start with athletics. And everyone has in their packet an overview of the athletic budget. And again, using kind of that T-chart format, existing materials, new materials, existing staff, excuse me, new staff. And we're just pulling it up here on the screen for those folks that will watch this at home. We also have an overview in your packet of our uniform cycle. And we had some good news for our softball uniforms this year, which is really wonderful.
Do you want me to start with uniforms?
No, you can start with your-
T-chart?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So, there's really, the existing materials are basically essential supplies to run an athletic program. Game ball, scorebooks, medical supplies, equipment, workshops and trainings such as CPR and first aid. Those are kind of staying the same. Any new materials? I did say that we, I originally put in for the softball uniforms for $3,500, but it was, I took it out because we got that grant from the district, the DA's office. So, that was pretty awesome. And that was enough to cover uniforms for both JV and varsity. So, all the girls have the same uniforms.
Awesome.
Next-
I'm sorry. They'll have those for this season?
Yep. They actually came in yesterday. So, they're in, ready to go, and they'll have them for this year. So, really excited. I had the Nike rep come and met with some of the girls. They helped pick out the uniforms and they sized them for what, hopefully they all fit.
Are they black?
No. They are gray and purple. So, the shirts are purple. They're really light.
There you go.
I wore-
Purple.
I probably wore those uniforms. That's how old those uniforms are.
And they're gray pants this year instead of, we had white pants last year, so, and they got really dirty. So, we switched it up a little bit. Boys soccer is up for uniforms. I budgeted $1,430 for their uniforms. They're up on the cycle. We are looking at a direction to possibly go with a middle school soccer league versus a JV league. And this, there is a fee that is kind of going along with that. The league will offer us to have scheduled games, about 12 to 14 games per schedule. And it is with teams that are local. A couple of teams that we haven't played before, such as Milis, are also on that list. And like I said, it's a league that we would opt to go into if we decide to kind of go in that direction. I'm looking to send out surveys as to see kind of just the numbers and see what our numbers are like for next year, but that is a direction I think we're kind of leaning towards doing.
Is that girls and boys?
For girls and boys, yep.
Same question.
Is it 200 per, or just-
It would be 200 per team. So, it would be 200 for girls, 200 for boys. So, a total of $400. And that, again, will open up to sixth graders, too. So, now, our middle school team would be sixth, seventh, and eighth, and then we would have a varsity team. And with the hope to essentially then add a JV team because we'll hopefully have kids that will stay and will kind of move up. So, that's, I guess, the long-term goal.
And you're surveying, you had said you're surveying families, look at numbers, interests-
Yep. So, we're sending it out to the, all the middle school kids. I haven't sent it out yet, but it will be sent out to all the middle school kids as well as the incoming sixth graders. So, everyone will kind of be able to, it will kind of help me. And, you know, I'm also asking my varsity coaches just to kind of look at the numbers as to what the best direction would be.
So, the plan right now is a middle school and a varsity-
Varsity team. Yeah, nothing's finalized yet, but that's kind of the direction we're thinking of going with. That would probably be beneficial for all the teams. Yeah.
I think you'd have some very excited sixth graders.
I think so, too. So, I think that would be-
Potentially some very sad ninth graders.
I think it's like a flip side.
Like not playing, being on varsity?
Yeah. Why are there too many people?
It's not on the agenda for tonight.
The next one is just kind of, the rest are just things that teams are in need of. Field hockey there, goalie equipment is definitely in need for a full set, just from wear and tear of use. The MIA started a heat policy and is requiring us to purchase some, it's called a wet bulb, which basically just you go out there and you test the humidity. And if it's of a certain degree, then there's different types of, if it's too high, we, you know, cancel practices.
Is that for football? That's for anything?
It's for any, anything for the fall. So, we did have, in a few days, there was a soccer game, I think it may have been a boys soccer game where they took breaks in between. So, they would do a timeout and it wouldn't count as a timeout. It would be like a-
They did that several times in the girls.
Yeah, like a couple-minute break just to kind of get them water. It's just a new policy that the MIA is requiring all schools to follow. And the wet bulb just will give you us a better reader of what the humidity is.
Is that for summer, too?
Yep. So, it'd be first, it would, we'd start it from August and go until the end of fall season or the first frost. And then, it would start again probably towards the end of spring season when it starts to get a little warm in June. That's the plan for that. So, football helmet repair kit, again, is just needed for the program. Helmet, scrimmage caps, wrist stopwatch for the cross-country team, starting blocks for the track team, a men's javelin. Those are, again, just essential items that are just from wear and tear, just need to be replaced. The last two were to put back the shuttle bus for fall and spring. This gets the kids to practices, so it is, in my opinion, kind of important to have the transportation of the middle school kids at the high school for their practices and games. Hopefully, it will allow more kids to be part of these teams, knowing that they have that transportation. We did, were able to do it this fall, and we are going to be able to do it for the spring. But just kind of getting that in that budget, that it stays in that, in the budget would be beneficial.
So, in the fall, it would be transporting what kids for what?
So, for fall, it would be soccer, boys and girls soccer.
But if there is no, if there is a middle school soccer.
So, if there isn't, so it would be field hockey, volleyball, and sometimes cross-country. And then, in the spring, it would be baseball, softball, and middle school track.
And it's $13,000 a year?
It's 130-
For one-way?
130 a day is what we've got.
One-way.
That's crazy.
How did we make it work? Because I thought they just adjusted the route.
So, last fall, I believe we, to get the kids to the high school, we were able to kind of just have the kids jump on, I think it was bus four and bus five.
That came back by he-
And then, it came behind, right behind the high school, like that back entrance.
Runway drive?
Yes. And it dropped the kids off there and then they walked in. This year, because they rerouted the buses, the buses were at capacity and they couldn't get the kids there. So, that's kind of why we're in a jam this past fall of how are we going to get the kids over to the high school? So, I think-
How many kids are we talking about? Yeah, what's going to be my next?
So, I mean, there's usually around anywhere from five to eight on each team, plus if you have our middle school track team in the spring, there's about 30 to 40 kids.
But it's, but in the fall?
In the fall, it would be close to roughly like, let's say, we have five kids for each team, so 15 to 20.
Can we lease a bus for $13,000?
Or use the van?
Yeah, they fit in our van. That's what I was like, the van, but-
Van fits only seven. So, it would be more of a shuttle.
Yeah.
Back and forth.
Can I ask, how many middle school kids we have playing?
Three trips to the, high school to the middle school.
Field hockey?
Middle school, I mean, I don't have the rosters out in front of me, but I want to say we had about at least four this year. And I mean, I can go back and look at the rosters as well, just to see. I'm just thinking if-
Lot of money.
Lot of money.
So much money.
A lot of money.
Because I mean, I mean, we live in Blackstone, right? When I'm thinking about the van, I know it's like maybe potentially three or four trips, but it's literally-
One road. Well, one and a half.
You know, like it's a five-minute round trip-
Right.
Pretty much. Maybe that's how I drive, maybe it's seven minutes. But I don't know. I mean, that's a lot of money for a, for that stretch.
One-way.
One-way.
I have to think it would be cheaper than $130 a day for the van to go back.
To pay the van driver for an hour.
And it's not even every day.
If you're looking at this long-term, next year, this cost is not going to get smaller, it's going to get larger.
Right.
So, if you're thinking of making these programs geared towards middle school, you're going to have to transport those kids. So, we're talking 13,000 this year. Next year is going to be something else. The year after is going to be something else. So, the question, you know, where could that be better spent in terms of like leasing or-
Because Erin joked, but you could, you could lease a, like a 15 pass, or one of those little minivans.
That's why we got the handicap van years ago.
Yeah, and I believe we have drivers-
Because it was so expensive.
That are trained for that particular-
I think we have two, two.
I believe there's two.
Two?
I think there's Kevin and-
We have that capability.
So, but it's not even every day, because if it's a game day, you're, that bus is potentially not needed because the bus that we're paying-
There are some days, if it's like, let's say, if field hockey has a game and volleyball has a game, then we would need it because they would be at the high school. But if it's-
Right. So, it may not be like cross-country, but the other two still have to go.
So, it's not even every day that we're filling it up, is what I'm saying. Because, because if field hockey has a game, are they shuttling to BMR to get on the bus or is the bus coming here to pick them up after they take the high school kids?
So, if everyone's away, let's say it's a Wednesday and every team is away, we wouldn't need it.
There's no shuttle.
Or we don't get charged for that day.
They wouldn't be charged, no. So, if it was a day where the, you know, and because Telstone works with our schedule, she knows, okay, I don't need, she'll check in, say, do I need to do the shuttle today? Everyone's away. And I'll say, yes, everyone's away, you don't need the shuttle, and she'll not send the shuttle.
I just think it's an awful lot of money for, for the distance and the amount of time it literally takes, like.
I'm with you. I'm with you.
I'd do it for 50.
I would do it for 50 bucks.
We're going to hire a new van driver.
Maybe looking at your alternative for that would be best.
It'll fit in your schedule.
I'll park, I'll just do the minivan multiple trip.
Sarah's going to be a new van driver and we're all set.
You're ready.
It's go time.
For existing staff, everything's kind of stayed the same, just regular existing coaching, and there hasn't been any new staff added.
Jill, is the tent, is the boys tennis program, oh, it's taken out totally?
Yeah. I mean, we have no kids as of right now. I had one boy showed interest. I can't run a team with this one boy, so. The next one is just kind of user fees and first, user fees versus kind of rosters or predictions. And then, the ones that are kind of bolded are ones that could be kind of a threat at the level. So, as you notice, JV girls soccer and JV boys soccer are kind of highlighted. So, that's kind of one of the reasons why we're maybe going the direction of middle school. So, that's this one.
Jill, for the other, just a question on the projections or the predictions. On the other sports, are these, you know, they look like they're fairly consistent? Are we noticing any trends in terms of more kids gravitating toward any one particular sport? Or are we finding?
I mean, again, predict, I predicted that numbers wouldn't be the way they were in the, like for boys soccer. So, these are kind of just my, looking at graduation rate of seniors that graduated and hoping that all these kids stay with the program. That's kind of the way that I went. Consistency-wise, I think our football program definitely has some consistency there. Volleyball had some consistency with kids just continuing to stay field hockey as well.
Is, is there a, two questions. Does M-I-A-I, whatever it is, how many I's are in there?
M-I-A-A.
M-I-A-A. Sorry, in Rhode Island, it's R-I-I-L. But anyway, do they have minimums and do they have maximums?
So, for, they do have minimums where you just need enough to fill a team. So, kind of going back to what we had with girls JV soccer is, we didn't have enough to fill a team we played under. We played like, I think we played nine V nine for a couple of games. So, we weren't considered a team, but we still wanted the kids to kind of play. A couple of our field hockey games, due to kids being out sick, we, the JV team played nine V nine. So, that, a lot of the schools will work with you with that. But to have, to answer your question, to have a team is, like the minimum requirement would be how many would be on the field.
I actually was more concerned about Mac, because to Tammy's point, although it's not on the agenda, if I have 10 JV soccer boys and I have 14 varsity, but I potentially may not have a JV, now, I don't know how many of those would be eighth graders, I have no idea, not trying to go there. But just, is the soccer team allowed to have a team of 20 people? Like, is there a maximum they-
I mean, they could.
I realize playing time-
It would, that would be-
It impacted, but are they allowed to have a-
They are allowed.
No-cut team, I guess.
I mean, again, it goes off of how many uniforms we would have. We don't have 20 uniforms to fill the team. We usually have roughly around 18, 16 to 18 teams. That would really be the only reason why they wouldn't have a full.
But you don't have middle school soccer on here.
I don't, because, no, I don't.
Sorry. I'm trying to turn it off.
Jill, can I, can I ask a follow-up to Jane, just Jane's question? So, if we look back at, I think, to the, I think the point that you're driving towards, Jane, when I look back at the boys varsity soccer team in 2018, there were 21 kids, right?
Yep.
So, theoretically, right, we've done it. You could field a team of six or seven more kids than what we have.
Because I have to believe some of those are seventh graders.
Aren't there 11 on the field?
I'm just wondering.
Yeah. I don't know. How many people play soccer?
Eleven.
Eleven, yeah.
So, I'm sorry. This is like two sets.
Yeah, but, you know.
I mean, there has been times, like two years ago, we had a lot more kids that came out for boys soccer where we had to make a lot of cuts. And then, previous years, the numbers just-
Right, because you had 20 on a JV team, but then it was like, whoa, goodbye.
What's the average size soccer team?
Roughly around, I would say 18 would be, 17, 18 would be ideal, because you have 11 that play, and then you can have some subs. I mean, again, it kind of depends on the coach. It depends on what we have for uniforms as well.
It's a long season's practicing for three, two to three hours a day and sitting on that pine bench or whatever bench you have. That's all I'm going to say.
Understood.
For two years, potentially three, if you're really lucky.
Potentially four.
Usually, you'll quit by then, but-
You'd be surprised.
No, I, I know.
You'd be surprised.
Living the dream for many years.
I, I can name some who do four years and never play.
But the reality is, is we don't know how many of these 10 are middle school, were already middle school kids.
Right.
So, you're looking at possibly not having enough for a middle school and a varsity team. If you really look at that total number, depending on where they lo, they fall grade-wise, and we're just looking at boys, look at the girls. There's only, there were only six.
Yep. And that's one of the reasons why the survey is going to be a really good-
Really important.
But adding sixth grade could actually help that girl number that-
Absolutely.
I think, oh, I'm sorry. I'm replacing.
Sixth grade can't play JV. No, because you're making this-
I was just saying, and the configuration, I think depends on the numbers, right?
Yeah.
And where the interest is.
Correct.
So, I think we're not making a final decision yet. I want to look at to see how many kids we have, if we even have enough to do this, which I'm hoping by maybe adding those sixth graders we would. And that's-
So, when are these decisions going to be made?
Hopefully soon.
Is the survey going to go out and then you'll revisit and share with us?
Yep, and we'll revisit and, yep. And I have to let the league know by mid-March if we're going to be joining them, because they do their scheduling then.
Joining them, meaning JV and varsity?
Uh, joining the middle school league, yep.
Right. But my question is, after you put out the survey, is the point of the survey to see what the interest is and whether we can-
Yep, to find numbers, see what the interest is, and see if we can even do it, if we have enough kids to field a varsity and a middle school team.
Right. So, that's going to go out and then will you, because I think this is a hot topic for us, so I think, would, would you report back to us-
Sure.
On what that survey showed?
Yep.
So, that we have a better understanding of the why behind JV or no JV?
Yep.
Thank you.
And then, the last one is just the uniform cycle. Girls tennis, so this year, we were able to do girls tennis. And boys basketball were budgeted items. The softball, varsity, and JV were covered by the grant. I was also able to squeeze in track and field. We do get promo money from the company we use or the, they, the primetime sports. When you order uniforms through them, they give you kind of kickbacks and they give you promo money. So, I've been able to use that towards another set of uniforms, so it's not coming out of our budget. So, I'm hoping to do track and field. Those have not been ordered yet. And then, I roughly wrote down of who was next on the list for 2020, 21, 22, 22, 23, and I kind of stopped there.
Did we do away with the warm-ups or?
I did. I kind of, I find that a lot of the teams purchase their own. And giving out school-issued warm-ups, it's usually harder to get them back sometimes, too, from kids. And like I said, a lot of the teams have been doing their own little team store where they have specific ones that they want, and they kind of just do their own thing.
So, my only concern with that is those kids who have trouble paying for those. So, I hope if those are happening throughout the teams, that there's something that comes from us that says if you cannot afford something like this, please reach out to the school. Because they're not cheap. They're like $80 for the whole-
And are they required?
They're not required.
They're not required, but you have 10 kids on a team and you're the only one, so they're required.
Middle school basketball, they wore it for every one of their game days, the kit we had to buy.
And, and I really, I'm-
It was required to wear.
I really think that needs to go out to the teams.
Yep.
I think every team that has that needs to have a notice that if you cannot afford something like this, to please reach out to the school, because nobody's going to go to the coach and say, I can't do it. And I think that option needs to be available if teams are being expected to purchase the amount that they're expected to purchase.
And that's on top of the user fee.
That's on top of the, the user fee.
Middle school had to get a polo and a long-sleeved shirt, right? It was the two pieces.
And it's different for every sport?
Well, it depends on whatever the choice is.
They had to purchase a polo with their name on it and the thing, and they had to get a jersey with their name on the back that they wore on the court.
A long-sleeved shirt. I mean, it ended up being-
It was nice. I mean, I'm not complaining. It was nice and they looked really nice in them, but it was an added expense on top of the user fee.
And for every sport your child played?
Right. Well, I think it's, I was going to say, I don't, soccer didn't have that.
But I don't, I don't think, I don't think my-
It just depends on the kids.
Right. And I don't think that, I think my point is that it's okay that that's, that a coach wants that, and I think that we look good when we all show up wearing very similar things. What I'm saying is the school needs to be responsible for putting out a letter if that's going to be the intent for students who cannot afford this, because they already are paying the user fee.
Yep.
So, if, if this is going to be expected, doesn't matter, expected, not expected, I think there needs to be a letter put out, but to each of these, each of these teams that, you know, if there's a hardship, that we, we reach out and support that.
Typically, those families are not paying user fees, just for the record. I mean, there are some border people, but.
But it's still my point that.
No, no, I get, I get your point. I'm just saying.
So I, I just moving forward, I think I would feel better if, if a letter, if I knew a letter was going out, um, to those particular teams that are expected to purchase.
Sure.
So, anything else on that? Can I go to the user fee page?
Is it the one by?
So you're telling me that in Douglas, if they have a, you have a child that does three sports, it's nine hundred dollars?
So I sent this out to my ADs and I had them fill it in, so Douglas, yes, correct.
They were paid to play. They were paid to play.
But they're not anymore. They're not anymore.
Right, but their budget was still.
But it might be the reason because of.
Why they're, where they are.
That's why they're that expensive.
But even still, but, but even still, Bellingham is two fifty with no cap. And no, so that's per kid per sport.
Nick Monk's pretty high too. And Sutton is with Douglas except for the third. Well, the third sport goes down to one.
How many of those schools with?
Increasing hours.
I wonder if that's contributing to the need for co-ops.
I hope this isn't like to, to propose increasing our user fees.
No, but that's what I mean. You're gonna, if you're pushing kids away with all these user fees all over the place, you're gonna see declining participation in athletics.
I agree, absolutely. I agree.
Well, we're not the highest and we're not the lowest.
Oh, we're, we're right in the middle.
Yeah.
We're not.
We're not.
We, we asked, in our conversations, we asked athletics and music, uh, cost center supervisors to do an analysis of the surrounding areas. And in our conversations and after looking at the information, we made the decision moving forward that we're fine to stay where we are right now.
I think it's always good to double check.
Yeah, that's why we pulled the numbers.
And you heard during the music presentation, um, Todd's explanation of it's, you know, again, it's like.
But we are, we are potentially, I mean, short of Millbury, Grafton and, and Milford, we, well, and actually not even, you can't say for Milford. We are potentially cheaper because we have the family cap.
Is it clear to everyone?
We're the cheapest in the DVC.
That's a family.
There's a waiver? Like, that should be one of the first things that people see when we put out anything about fees, is that there are waivers available.
It's on the registration page.
Does it pop up right away? Yeah, I honestly don't.
Yeah, it asks you, free and reduced, family cap, like, it has all these questions.
Okay.
So if I have one child and she or he, he or she plays three sports, I'm, I'm paying for two at six hundred dollars.
And you're paying for three.
You're paying for three.
Or two hundred, yeah. So I'm paying for three. If another family has four children.
Buy one, get one free.
And they pay, they play three sports.
You have two kids for three sports.
Aaron hitters.
I don't know, it doesn't seem fair.
You hit your, you hit your, your max. But I, but I will tell you, Jane, that many of these same kids that are playing sports in this district are playing club teams, are playing all these things that are, you know, could potentially be two to four thousand dollars. I don't know how much hockey is, but, so like, when I, when I went from competitive dance to two hundred dollars in user fee, that's, that is one costume plus a pair of tights. Two hundred dollars, one costume, and they were in nine dances. So, so in, in the scheme of things, for a lot of people, it's, it's affordable for what you're getting. Which is five days of practice, two games, potentially tournaments, like, in the scheme of things, the value is there.
For most.
For most.
Not all.
I would say most. I mean, some people can't afford it, I get that. I mean, I was that kid when I was younger. I mean, if you, if you don't have it, you don't have it to do whatever, but in the scheme of things, we have waivers for that.
Only if you're free and reduced.
If you're free and reduced.
There is also payment option too.
Right.
Could help families out as well.
I don't know. Kid with, I guess have a lot of kids.
I, rec, rec baseball's a hundred and seventy-five dollars, not including a ninety-dollar uniform, times three. Lacrosse, a hundred and seventy-five dollars, times three, no cap. I mean, it just, it never, it just never ends. So we are on the low side. The only, what?
Hockey.
I'm not even saying hockey right now.
Times two.
Times two.
Mostly town, our town soccer's two hundred bucks a kid, plus all the uniforms.
And that's a lot less for your value. It's once a week.
I, I think we run into when we reach school nowadays, is, you know, you have the playing time, so you're playing, I mean, that is a whole nother, a whole nother level. So you pay this amount of money, that might be tough, and then your child doesn't play. It is what it is. I'm not, I, I'm just saying, that's where it gets difficult when you play for all these other leagues, you're playing. That's the only difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jill.
Uh, so next, um, Jill Pilagallari is gonna join us and talk a bit about the, uh, budget and the programming structures for, uh, the Office of Learner Support Services.
Long time no see.
I know. So I'm just gonna go over both for our English Language Learner Program as well as our special education tonight. So our English Language Learner Program, there, we have gone through a lot of changes and our numbers have changed. So currently this year, we have one point five teachers that cover K through twelve. Um, we currently have our ELL students, which are English Language Learners. So those are our students who right now are considered not to be proficient, um, in the English language, in the areas of reading, writing, speaking and listening. We have twenty-five across the district. Um, and that's broken out, I broke it out for myself. K through three, we have seventeen students. Four, five, we have three students. Six through eight, we have, we don't have any L students in the middle school. And at the high school, we have five English Language Learners. And within that group, just know that their, their, um, levels vary greatly. We have a student who is SLIF, meaning that they didn't really have an education before coming here, so their needs vary greatly. Um, so those are our English Language Learners. Our FEL, those are our former English Language Learners. So those are our students that were originally our English Language Learners. They made gains and they were tested through access. They met that qualifying score that they considered they could FEL. And our FELs.
They flapped? Former?
Former English, they're called, they flap, but they're called FELs, yes. Um, so those are our students, yes, right. So those are our students that did have services in the past and they're monitored, so their progress monitored by our English, um, our ESL teachers for four years.
To make sure they don't fall below again or?
Well, they don't, they're not reassessed because they, they've met that goal, but we make sure that they're keeping up. Because remember, our teachers in the classroom also have to be SEI endorsed, Sheltered English Immersion, so they should be using some of the strategies in the classroom. But our ESL teachers are monitoring their progress and we're completing progress reports for these students, but they are not tested again. Um, and at those levels are, um, K through three, we have nine who are FELs. Our four and five, we have eleven. Our six or eight population have eighteen students, and our nine through twelve, we have ten students. Our opt-out students, um, parents also have the opportunity, if you have a student who is considered an L, who should be getting services, parents can opt out of that service. They have to be given that opportunity every year. And we do across the district have, uh, four students, um, who parents have opted out. Two of them are K through three and two of them are the nine through twelve. I will say that those students are still monitored and we're still required to test them through access, but parents do have that opportunity to say, I'm not interested.
I was gonna say, you still have, I mean, you still have to.
Still have to assess them, yep.
But they get no service.
Correct. Well, they'll get the service of the fact, we know that they have been identified as L. Our teachers are SEI endorsed. They should, you know, have an understanding of that. We, our ESL teachers still monitor their progress, but no, they're not getting direct service and parents have that right. Yeah, and what, how they changed a little is we have to approach those parents every single year. So you can't just say once, I'm never gonna have that service. Every year, we, you know, we send out our letters. We're assuming all pa, all kids are gonna be getting these services, but parents have that right to opt out. Um, but like you said, we do, we have to still test them every year. So if we have those students who don't make gains, you know, it could be because they're not getting the service that they need. Um, so that's what we have now, and under there, I just listed the programs we use. I'm sure you're all aware. The National Geographic, that was something that was trialed a few years ago and we did invest in that program because we really didn't have a curriculum, a program for our, um, English Language Learners. So that's our K through twelve program. We also are using, because we do have some students whose, um, English language proficiency is, um, at a level right now that they're having difficulty accessing the materials we have in English. So we were actually able to trial, um, one of our users on a Send Math. It was in Spanish. So it was great. And then we also have, um, the Go Math. We have it in Spanish as well. It was just very difficult for our students to access English. They're still getting all those services, but in order for them to access that, we're, we're providing some additional support.
Do we have any students who Spanish is not the language they primarily speak?
Yes, we have other languages, but right now, our students who, who are here, new here, um, not just to our school, but to the country, um, don't have any English, so, um, those students are getting a lot of intensive services and we want to make sure that they're accessing our curriculum as best as possible. So even if we have a student who's a SLIF student who only made it to fourth or fifth grade, we want them to engage even at that level. Um, and we're able to have them access that math through, you know, having it in Spanish. But it's not just Spanish. We have some, you know, other students.
This is only available in Spanish?
Well, it's all I've had to look up for right now. All of our other students are able to access with the other languages. Yeah, our kiddos right now who required something more, their first language is Spanish.
Are there, are there resources available if we have new students come in that have zero English and it's not Spanish?
There are resources. We always look. It seems like the more, you know, common the language, the easier it is Spanish to find. Uh, but there are some, and if I have a student who speaks Laotian, it's very difficult to find Arabic. Some of our Arabic-speaking students, it's very difficult to find those. So, but we do, I mean, there's a lot of different things that we try, you know, with them. And they're still learning English along the way. We're not saying, we're not teaching in English. We're just supplementing in Spanish until they learn those skills, so we're not holding them back to access.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then on the other side, um, for our twenty to twenty-one, one of our main goals is to continue to investigate resources available as part of the identified literacy programs. Because with the new literacy program coming in, although we have the program for National Geographics, we always want to make sure, is there something supplemental in that program? Could, that could help the students access that. So we'll continue to investigate that once the new literacy, um, programs are decided and they come in. Um, it's very difficult to say how many Ls we're going to have next year because it all depends on new students that are coming in. And then when students take their access tests, some of them will, will not be ELs anymore, so it's hard to predict that number and the same thing with the FELs. What I can tell you on our FELs is, we definitely have seven students who have, are gonna be finishing up their fourth year and it boggles well. They will be coming off the monitoring, considered proficient and, you know, accessing and making gains. Any questions for our English language? Not a lot of changes here.
So, so currently in this upcoming school year, we haven't really investigated any resources, um, budgetary wise.
There hasn't been a need right now, so, right, but what we're going to do is, with the current program that, you know how we're looking at the literacy program? Some of the programs that I looked at had some specific supplemental things for students who were Ls. So my feeling is if we have a program and our students can have better access to this and there's a few supplemental things, we definitely want to investigate and trial them.
Has that, so none of those have been piloted with this program?
Well, no, because I don't know exact, like.
Well, we, we piloted the, the, we've been piloting that.
Oh, yeah, no, no, none of the Ls, no.
None of the Ls have been piloted within that program.
Nope, because we do have a good national, I mean, that's all encompassing and we have the supplemental. But whenever we, using a new program, it's always good to investigate what is out there. Because you'll find a lot of the good companies are actually having those supplemental materials for our Ls or for our special ed students. But no, we didn't trial any of those. And I don't think all of the programs even have any. One of them I know does because I've been looking at it. Next one is, get, jump right into special ed. So currently for this school year, we have approximately, and again, it changes day by day, hour by hour, three hundred and nineteen students in special ed, which is about nineteen percent of our population, which is about on par with the state. It's not significantly over or under. Um, we continue to offer, we have our continuum of services, which again, is students who are fully included with supports. Some who receive partial inclusion means sometimes they're in the classroom, sometimes they're pulled out. And then we have some students who receive the majority of their academic day, um, in a substantially separate program, so they're pulled out. Some of the programs, and I know I've presented these before, are specialized programs, as we do have, this year was new, our alternative program, um, at the elementary school, which right now, um, our students are of our younger elementary ages, grades one through three. We continue to have our pragmatic, pragmatic learning program, our PLC, um, which is at right now at the elementary level.
Jill, could you do me a favor? Could you just, um, give us like a overview of somehow?
Absolutely, yep. Yep, so alternative learning program right now at the elementary. Um, it's more of, um, alternative in the sense of the students there may need different, um, behavioral, um, um, services. The academic piece, it's all encompassing. So you wouldn't just have a student in there who has like a reading disability. It's gonna be kind of an all encompassing disability and our students in that program, you know, we do have the therapeutic piece in there as well.
The clinician attached to that?
Yep. Um, we have, it's staffed, our current alternative is staffed by, we have a teacher, we have a paraprofessional, and we have an ABA paraprofessional. And our BCBA, um, consult with that program. And also other things, like our coach is involved with that program as well. Our pragmatic learning classroom, we have our students who are on the spectrum currently in this program. It's, again, right now it's at the elementary level. Um, we do, it is staffed with our teacher and our, all of our paraprofessionals in that program are ABA paraprofessionals because they need that type of training because we are doing ABA type of lessons.
What grades is the?
Our pragmatic learning classroom right now goes up through grade six.
Is that one classroom?
Right now, it's one classroom. That's why you're gonna, we're gonna talk about next year, why we're gonna need to split that classroom.
So, so those kids are like four, five, six though, right? Because is it, if they're at the elementary?
We have forty-eight months. Say that again?
But they're at the elementary, the sixth grade?
We have one student. Sometimes what happens is we have a program, one student may stay for that year if they're still within the grade. So if we have a three through six classroom, kids right now in that classroom, next year, what's gonna happen is we always have our younger kiddos who are coming up into that classroom. So if I have a new K or one in there, I cannot add them with a student who's in seventh grade next year.
That was my question. That was my question.
Yeah, so you'll see when we get to the other side, we're gonna have a discussion about that as well, yep. We have our essentials at the middle school and these are some students that definitely need modification of the curriculum, of the instructional methodology, as well as the performance criteria. And our students could potentially, or most of our students are on that track for an MCAS alt. Our elementary essentials, right now, it's for our students who need the old, you know, self-contained classroom where a majority of their academic need to be at a modified level. They could have some challenges with social emotional issues, coping strategies, but they're working in a smaller group for the majority of their day right now. We also have an essentials program at the high school and our students are not only working on academics, but they're starting to work on their pre- vocational skills, their life skills. Our alternative learning program at the high school, um, provides more of a, a little bit of a therapeutic component for some of our students who need something a little bit different for their day. Whether it's the, the schedule, um, more breaks in their day, they need things broken down more for them. The smaller classroom is something they need to, you know, to be able to function when they're here in school. Our community connections program is our eighteen to twenty-two-year-old program. So our kiddos in this program are really working on those post-high school skills. They're out in the community, they're learning, they're getting their jobs. Um, we have a great connection with Mass Rehab. They come out and they've been doing a lot of training with the kids, developing resumes, um, strategies for jobs. Um, and then we also have our integrated preschool classrooms, and right now we have three sections that are integrated and we have one section right now that is substantially separate. So those are the programs we currently have.
How many people are in our community connections?
We have, it varies. Um, I would say it probably about five this year who are benefiting from that program. And what happens is sometimes our kiddos from their essentials classroom come to that age in the middle of the year who need to start investigating some of those community things, so they'll, you know, take some opportunities to be with some of our older students.
Thank you.
Yep. Then on our other side, which was next year, um, we are going to be having students who are, are going to be, their age span is going to be way too big, um, for them to be together. So we are gonna need to look at, um, splitting the program and having part of the program, well, one classroom, not part of the program, but one classroom is gonna be going to the middle school and one classroom would have to remain in Milville. So the Milville program would start, you know, looking at the kids K through, say, three, four, which is the range. And then our one that will be at the middle school would be our, right now, our sixth and seventh.
So there's no fifth?
So what I was gonna say, what do you do with a fifth grader?
I don't, they could. I just don't have it. I won't have a fifth grader, right.
But the, I think the only way, place they could go is slide into the sixth grade.
In the middle school.
Right, so say next year, we had someone who moved into town who was in fifth grade. They would be age appropriate to go to that program.
The sixth, seventh.
Sometimes we do that, yep. We've had students who, you know, age-wise were appropriate to come to a program at the high school before they, you know what I mean, at the high school.
But they can't go lower.
So does this require more staffing?
I will be getting to that.
Oh, we'll be getting to that. I have to turn the page in?
Or an adjustment to staffing, right?
Yeah.
Possibly. We'll get into that, but that's what we're looking at right now. And the big thing, it's the age of, it really is the age of the kids and it wouldn't be, it is. It, it's really not appropriate to have a seventh grader with a first grader.
No, and I, and if I'm that parent, I don't want my seventh grader.
There is an opportunity for waivers. There could be times when you have kids who are maybe, you know, um, sixth and fourth and they could be similar. But with the, with the age span split, we're going to have the size of the students, the needs, it, it's just not appropriate for that.
In that program, there should be room to move. It should be a move, it should be fluid. So there should be an opportunity for them to be able to move to the next.
Correct.
Continuum of services.
Right.
Yes, correct, absolutely. So our next one, I know we've talked about these a lot, and one of our big focuses this year was really, um, weeding through all of the programs that we had and really focusing. So our main programs, our, our Read Live, Read Naturally, our Send Math, our Wilson Reading. Um, we also do use a little bit of EdMark for some of our essentials classroom, and this is more of a program that, for our students who might be having challenges with more of a phonetic-based reading program, it's more of a whole language type of, um, approach. Um, we also have foundations, which I know we use in regular Ed, but we also use it, um, for some of our, uh, students in a smaller group. We're using the ACE curriculum. I don't know if anyone's familiar with that, but it's, we're using it right now in our PLC classroom. And it's ABA, ABA-based lessons. And what it does is it teaches both basic and some of the advanced skills and social skills, communication, academic, self-help skills. And this is actually a program that was developed from NAC and our teachers. We had, part of, because we're using the program, they've been able to come out and give some additional training to our staff. Um, so as well as our coach and our BCBA, they're helping to make sure we're implementing these lessons for our students in our PLC. So there's. So there takes a lot of the guessing out of it. They can really focus. We also have a life-centered education or L C E curriculum, and that's the curriculum, I don't think I've mentioned this before. We use that for our eighteen to twenty-two year olds. So besides bringing them out into the community, they also have a curriculum that they work on. It could be budgeting, filling out forms. It could, you know, the things they're gonna see when they get out and they're in the community. They practice it first and then they go out. It could be a paycheck. What is that gonna look like? Or banking. And it's very individualized for students. There's different areas that they can look into and they're able to work on those types of programs.
Is this update, is this a like a?
We've been using this.
Is it like super old? Because I, I used to use this, but it was like.
So it's on the computer, so it does, it does update.
Oh, it's on the computer, okay.
Yeah. In addition to that, we do have some other transition, there are transition binder programs that we use with the kids. So if we have students who are gonna go out into community and they have to learn how to self-advocate in the community, we talk about those types of skills as well. And it's very individualized. Different students need different things. We also have done, we have had in this district the L L I curriculum, which is a Fontes and Pennell Level Literacy Intervention System. It's been in the district and our coach went through it and we're actually trialing it in K one. And we found that it's been great because it does the, the reading, it does the writing, it's got, you know, the giant books for the kids. It's very much literacy based. So they, our K one's been trialing that this year just to get a sense of how the kiddos are doing. They seem to enjoy it. It's a program that can do a little bit more, but it's something we had in the district and it's, again, research based. It's got a lot of good feedback from it, so that's something that we're trialing. And then the others program is we were, we were missing a little bit because we have some programs that are considered our essentials and some of our students are working in very different, the, the complexity of the grade level curriculum i- is much modified in those programs. So we're, we are trialing the unique curriculum and we want to look at another and it's all encompassing. So you're not guessing. It's standard based and it's all encompassing in social studies, in writing, in language. So the kids are actually able to access those standards, but through a program. So the teacher isn't trying to constantly spend that time modifying or pulling from here, pulling from there. It, you know, it's standard based, it's systematic, it's very explicit, so we've been trialing that as well. So again, taking the guesswork out of things.
What grades are you trialing that?
Right now we're using it at the, our middle school essentials program. We did trial it at our high school essentials program, but it didn't go in depth enough. But right now we're using it mostly, trialing it at our middle school. So in, for next year, again, we're gonna continue with the implementation of our identified programs. And last year our goal was to start investigating some writing programs. We're looking at one right now, but it doesn't seem to make sense for us to go off a different path until our literacy program here is in place. Because we want to make sure that whatever we choose is gonna be a nice fit for what we're using now. Similar language, you know, things like that. So that's one of our goals, to continue to look at that writing piece. And I don't know, our, the new literacy programs have a really strong writing component. It might not need to be something different. It could just be that we're gonna be looking at different methodology rather than the content or program. Next is our staff. So our current staff on the left, I just listed for you our elementary special education teachers. We currently have four in Milville. We have three pre-K in Milville and we have seven special ed teachers at the complex. At the middle school, we have four. And B M R High School, we have six. And I listed all of our support services. We have three school psychologists, three team chairs, one physical therapist for the district, two occupational, one B C B A, one planning, teaching and learning coach. We have two and a half speech and language mythologists. We have the family liaison. I know that's something that Dr. DeFalco had mentioned that we're exploring and a job description for that as well as.
But we have it now?
A job description? No, we don't have it now.
I mean, we have a person?
We don't, do not have a person. But I think it's, this isn't gonna be, this position is not new money.
Yeah, there's the funding for that position would be from a slight reorganization in the, in the department right now.
But it is a new position.
Yes.
Would be a new position.
And then our S L P A. And then underneath here.
This is nineteen twenty.
Yeah. And then underneath our paraprofessional, A B A slash paraprofessionals, we have twenty-three total at the elementary. And we currently have, within that, it's fifteen at M E S and eight at the complex. We have six at the middle school and nine at the high school. Something I do want to just stress is we have totally thirty-eight paras, five of them are A B As, thirty-three are paraprof, are classroom paraprofessionals. But the majority of some of our students, you might say fifteen paraprofessionals at Milville, what are they doing? It's because the majority of them, ten out of the fifteen, are part of our specialized programs. So we do have to heavily staff our programs. So in our specialized programs at Milville, as I mentioned, our alternative program, we have two additional staff members in there besides the teacher. Our P L C, we have two additional. In our P K program, besides having, you know, the paraprofessionals, we also need an A B A. We have an A B A in our substantially separate program. And in Milville, they also have one, we have three one-to-ones currently. So, yeah, so out of the fifteen.
Three at Milville?
Yeah. So out of the fifteen in Milville, there's really five that are more of our inclusion support and the other ten are really, they're more for our specialized programs and our students requiring one-to-ones.
Do those include the preschool as well?
Yep.
How many are at the preschool? Do you know?
Yep, we have one, we have, we have three, because you have three teachers.
And three pairs.
We have two paraprofessionals and one A B A. And that's a little bit similar to the middle school. We have four paraprofessionals and we have two that are part of our essentials program. And at the high school, we have five paraprofessionals that are more of our inclusion and the other ones are for our specialized programs and any student requiring a one-to-one. On the right-hand side, these are some of the staffing needs that we're going to have. So because of our P L C expanding and because of the age levels, we are gonna require a new classroom at the middle school, which would require another teacher. And the other thing is that we are recommending, we have, if our goal is to keep, to develop programs in district and keep them in district, we have one B C B A for this entire district. And we have quite a few specialized programs and we have some A B As in place. So we're recommending the addition of the registered behavior therapist, an R B T, to be that person who can help support those programs on a regular basis, because our B C B A is all around the district.
What does that mean?
A registered behavior therapist, so a registered.
Oh, B C B A.
Oh, our board certified behavior analyst.
Thank you.
Yep.
Would they work together?
So our board certified behavior analyst right now is our person who oversees all our A B As in the district. She completes all our functional behavioral assessments. She might do observations for students who are having significant behavioral challenges. She does, she develops and helps staff understand how to, to implement behavior plans. She does that for the entire district. So that means any kid who's in regular education, she may do, could assist with that, part of a B B S T. She'll be doing for special education students. She does sometimes get involved with some of our out of district students if we're looking to bring them back in. But I have one person for all of that. So what's happening is, and for all of the buildings, if I have some specialized programs in Milville, I really need someone who's gonna be there in, in emergency situations, who's gonna be able to help support. So this would kind of be the go-between. We have a B C B A district-wide, we have A B As in those programs. It would be kind of that person in the middle. So it's not a teacher. They're certified behavior, some people call them technicians, but they would be helping to, they wouldn't develop plans, but they help the implementation of plans. They would help support those programs.
So they'd be a coach?
Well, they'd still be working with kids, but similar, but not at, it's not a teacher level. So they wouldn't be in that unit or at that level of pay. But it would be someone who would help support our A B As in the classroom, help support those behavioral intervention plans. Because right now with one, if we want to maintain our programs, I have to be very honest, we need to have the support to be able to do that.
I agree. Does the school psychologist not help with that with F B As and such?
Our, no, not the functional behavioral assessments. Our school psychologists complete all the other testing. They do all our achievement testing, all our projective testing.
The ed testing or just cognitive?
Everything.
So what do your team chairs do? I guess, I'm sorry.
I can go over that, I mean.
That's okay. It's just very different.
Yeah, it is. But no, our school psychologists, plus our school psychologists also see students.
Well, they, yeah, they do the, those in-classroom learning.
No, that's the.
Programs, don't they?
No.
So we could some, say that again?
Where are they at? Oh, they're not on this list. They're on the other list.
Yes. Our school psychologists, they are assessing cognitively, they're doing achievement, they're doing executive functioning, they're doing behavior. They do do some observations of students in the classroom and they also work directly with students. They also are I U Ps for consultations. Our B C B A is more of our students who have those, it's not about the social emotional piece, it's about the behavior piece. So it could be students who have sense, assisting with the sensory issues, are students on the spectrum. I mean, we have students on the spectrum who are higher functioning. We have students who are lower functioning. They assist with those. So they do perform very different roles, but again, we have one B C B A for the entire district. And again, if our goal is to do our best to maintain kids in our district, I need to make sure that our staff is supported. Because if we have one student, there's an emergency going on in the classroom, that could take three staff members. I'll, I'll be very honest, it can. It can take that many staff members to make sure that student is safe as well as the other students in the classroom are safe. So that's why we're proposing this. I'm not asking for another B C B A. I understand that we're too small for that, but we do have the need for that middle person.
So I, I guess I don't understand the difference from the R B T to the A B A.
Or B C B A.
No, I, I understand what she, she's saying the B C B A develops and implements, but the A B As are the ones overseeing it. So where does the R B T?
A little bit different. So our B C B A is like at a, I would put them at a teacher level, okay? They're like at that teacher level. So they're the ones who, like our school psychs, they may do the assessments. They don't work directly with kids.
Right.
Right. They're overseeing.
They may not know them, right?
Right. Well, they'll know them through observation. They develop plans for our students. They're the ones who write the behavior plans. They're the ones who would, after the data's collected, they would look, look at it and make decisions and determinations. They may change your behavior plan.
Consult with the teacher.
Absolutely. They could consult with the teacher.
Or the A B A.
Yes. A B A is a paraprofessional, so yes. They also supervise all the A B As in the district, so.
The B C B A person does?
The B C B A, yep.
So where does the R B T?
So the R B T would fall in the middle. So you would have a paraprofessional, our A B As, you would have a B C B A here, a R B T would fall in the middle. So they would be someone who's certified as a technician, who would fall in that middle. So it's not a paraprofessional goes in. They're gonna be someone who's gonna be supporting all the programs when they're having a challenge, if they're having a difficult time implementing a behavior plan, because our B C B A is all over the place.
So I'm going back to Tammy's question, even though she didn't want to go there. What does a team chair do?
So our team chairs, remember I was one for twenty years.
Correct.
So you're managing a caseload. What you're doing is you're pulling up all the kids that are in that building. You're making sure that they're, you're looking at their reevals, you're looking at when their review team meetings are. You're scheduling those meetings, you're chairing those meetings, you're monitoring all the paperwork, you're reviewing the I U Ps before they go out. You're reaching out to parents, you're sending home evaluation consents, you're counting out the thirty and forty-five days when those come in. You're sending out all the evaluations to the staff.
The three hundred and nineteen students.
Correct.
How many do we have of those?
Three.
So they have about a hundred each.
Yep. Which is pretty standard. Yes. But they don't test. They do not test.
Do you know how many kids the B C B A is overseeing?
I don't, but I can get that number. So they're overseeing all of our programs, our P L C, yes. And student-wise, it varies. She's probably consulting on about twenty students, but I don't have the exact number of F B As she's completed, but I can get that information. And remember, an R B T wouldn't complete those evaluations, but.
So what would the R B T be doing that an A B A cannot do?
So an A B A is a paraprofessional. They're not licensed, certified, behavior techs.
So the registered behavior therapist is a licensed, certified?
It's, they're licensed. They're not a certified teacher. They're not a teacher. There is a licensing that you have to go through to get this. So they're not a paraprofessional. Some will say, oh, they're in the paraprofessional realm because they're not teachers, but they're that middle.
They're helping to oversee the B C B A's.
Caseload, yes.
Caseload and plans.
Yes.
So if the, if the B C B A puts out a behavior plan for a particular student and then she's at the high school.
Correct.
This particular technician will oversee at Milville. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Isn't that what the A B As doing now?
The A B As are working with individual students. The A B As are working directly with specific students.
The only person who's assisting right now with all of this is our B A.
The B C B A is overseeing all of it.
And the technician will check in on the.
And observing. And the technician is checking in and overseeing and stepping in when there's technical and behavioral issues.
When there's concerns and the B C B A is at another, is in another school essentially.
So is it just less expensive for the R B T as opposed to?
I don't think we need another B, I think we're, I, I'm, I'm trying to be honest. Would I love another B C B A? Absolutely.
What's the cost difference?
One's on a teacher, one's on a teacher scale.
And what's this one on?
And one would be.
Probably about thirty thousand dollars.
Right.
Difference or?
Difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, typically a B C, a, a B C B A, you would probably bring in at sixty thou, at about sixty thousand dollars. This would be on an hourly basis, even though it's not at, at a para level, but it would probably be about, we're thinking thirty, thirty, thirty-five thousand.
So this wouldn't be a full-time position?
So this is a unit C?
Is that minimum wage?
But C, C is paid hourly.
Right. Right now it's not a unit anything because it's a new position.
It's above minimum wage.
Where would you see it being?
Even the future minimum wage.
It would probably be more in the paraprofessional realm, that unit than a teacher unit.
In our conversations, when we were discussing it, it also, this type of, this person would have more direct interaction with the, with the students as opposed to introducing another B C B A, which would alleviate some of the observations and some of the write-ups and some of the plan development, but doesn't still get their, their hands into the classrooms. So this is a, a more, as Jill mentioned, an intermediate position, but it'll be working in the classrooms.
If we want to focus on program development and keeping our kids, I, I.
We have to have the support.
We do. Like I said before, I can throw a program together, say, this is the classroom that does this and leave people there without the kind of support they need to make it work. So what we're seeing this year with our programming, we have a new, you know, a couple of new programs. We have an alternative program which brought back, we have three out of district students who came back to that. And the last thing I want to do is to see, because we are not properly supporting the programs for our students to have to leave.
Well, which happened when we tried a middle school, what we called a program, what was really just a teacher and a classroom with a parent. It fell apart.
Right.
Where is our B C B A located right now?
So she is all over the place. She has offices, she has, yeah, she has two offices, two elementaries. So right now she's, I could say she's scheduled, right now there's not a lot of, a lot of time she needs at the high school, but we have, she spends a lot of time at Milville. Because again, we have specialized programs there. She spends time at the middle school and at the complex.
Oh, that's okay. So some of these students that we currently have in Milville are moving up to the middle school, correct?
Yes.
And those teachers that we have in Milville are staying in Milville, correct?
Potentially, yeah. Well, the programs are staying.
How many, how many teachers are in that classroom staying versus kids?
So we have.
Classroom teachers, not, not.
Any of the other stuffs.
Not B C B As or paras or whatever.
We have one classroom teacher for our P L C program. Is that what you're saying? Supported by two A B As for our P L C. Right now, there are three kids, three kids that benefit from that program.
So we have three kids that benefit, one teacher, two B C B As.
Yeah, they're all one-to-one.
Essentially one-to-one.
They are one-to-ones, yes.
Okay. So now, how many of those three kids are moving up?
So we have one student moving up.
Okay.
One student who's already here at the middle school.
Okay. So two of those.
Correct. And you have other, you might have another kiddo who's moving into the other one.
That's, that's what I'm asking you. So now you have, what is the, I mean, are they identified yet coming in? How many plan on being in that room?
We're probably looking at three again.
Okay. I'm, I'm just looking at read, like, I mean, we have a lot of paraprofessionals. We have a lot. I'm just wondering, has there been an adjustment? So I was.
We're not looking to add any paraprofessionals.
Right. No, I understand that, but my, I was, I wasn't sure if there were two in that classroom. And then my question would have been, why isn't one moving with them?
So we have one person that right now is at the middle school who would be added to that P L C classroom. So that's, it'll give them the staff there. And the other paraprofessionals will remain where they are in Milville.
But not, there's no, what, is there a teacher here already for that class?
We have an essentials classroom here and we have a student who requires something more.
Okay. So there would be potentially two teachers in that classroom here?
There would be, one essentials classroom would stay and the new P L C classroom would come. So we're, we're gonna be able to maintain our current staffing for, for, for paraprofessionals. But in order to create a new classroom, I would need a teacher for that classroom.
So, so moving here will be a teacher, essentially a teacher.
Yes.
And a parent for two students.
The parent is already here, so just a teacher.
Right. But what, the point I'm trying to make, all I'm trying to ask is that, body to body.
Correct.
So there would be a one-to-one here. Okay.
Yep, we'd still be able to staff it appropriately. Yep.
From the six that are already here.
Yes.
And we are still exploring what our options are for configuration of paras and teachers and students. And we are still exploring what our options are for configuration of paras and teachers and students to minimize any impact on additional FTEs. And Jill has also been working with other districts to even explore the opportunity of combining or sharing resources slash programs. So this is, these positions are recommendations for what we need. However, it's not necessarily, we need to add this, we need to add this. We're still, we're still exploring what the options are to minimize the financial impact to, to these programs.
Yeah, but our kids are, you know, we're seeing a split.
But they do need what they need, and we do have to provide them the services that they require.
Yep, absolutely. The next one, I guess one of our favorite ones.
Speaking of our students.
Yes, so this year, we have twenty-two students out of district. Last year, I think we had twenty-four. What we had, though, happen within this year is three new students came into the district who were already placed out of district. So we're in out-of-district. They were pretty significant. We didn't have a program for them. And we did have three students this current school year, so it was kind of a trade-off. We had three who moved in, and we had three that we brought back. So it was nice to have our program, because not only do we bring back three, we had a student who moved into the district who needed something more intensive. We were able to meet his needs here in district and didn't have to send him out. So that was a nice to know. Right now, out-of-district, we have, this year, we have thirteen students in collaborative programs. And a collaborative is your, I wanna say, step down from the public school. It's your next least restrictive is a collaborative. Then we have two students who are currently attending programs out of state, and seven students are at private placement. Next year, we anticipate possibly, we have thirteen at the collaborative, and I'm working right now. We have a student who could potentially come back to us next year in our eighteen to twenty-two-year-old program. We're looking at that. We're doing some observation, we're seeing if it's appropriate. So that could potentially be a student coming back. Our two out-of-state will remain the same, and we will be going down from seven in private to six, because one of our students is ready to step down to a collaborative. Now, this doesn't mean that tomorrow, I may not get a call to say someone's moving into our district to require so. These are all guest events, but... And this was, this year, to have three students move into a district in the same year that all had pretty significant needs is, that really hasn't happened that much. And just finally, for our budget, again, we really need to continue to provide specialized programs in district with a commitment to providing the needed training and staff support. That's why we're, you know, talking about the RBT. And it's great that we have our Planning and Teaching and Learning Coach. She's been great across the district and all of our programs, as well as support for our BCBA. Again, our specialized programs, we need to, we are continuing to focus to make sure that they're being implemented consistently and with fidelity. And, you know, definitely looking at those programs, they help assess us. It's not a guesswork anymore. Teachers are gonna know exactly how students are performing, how they're achieving, and where their areas are. Focused on student need, and again, it's data-driven. Any other questions? They seem to cost money every time I come outside. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you, Jill. We've gotten applause.
Anybody have any other questions, needs? We meet again Thursday. We're back together again.
Is there anything we could do tonight?
There's nothing we can do tonight?
Thursday will be quick. Thursday will be quick. What, you won't be here? Uh, you here? Jack, are you here Thursday?
Yeah, I didn't have it in my calendar, but I-
Sarah, you here? What?
I have it on my calendar.
Half of us had it and half of us didn't, but I did.
Well, it's, it's just small.
Because we talked, we originally didn't, and then we talked about going back to, to just having our two. Remember, we had gone to one a month, and then we said, we just need to go back to two, because we're having them anyway. So some of us put the two back in and hold it listed, but anyway, we do.
I didn't put it in. I, I don't got no plans.
The only, the only things we have on there is to approve a surplus and to approve the-
Regional agreement?
Do we have, do you have executive session or no?
At this point, nothing for it unless, no, wait, what, is there, at this point, nothing for-
Will you let us know if that changes?
Yes. Yes, I will.
Yeah, I'll just have to double-check to make sure I can do that, because I-
You didn't have it.
I guess.
But you're here, and you're, you're here. Are you here? You here? You here? You wanna say something?
What's your name?
Will.
Tell us where you're from.
And what school do you go to, Will?
MBES.
And do you like it? Sports?
Yes.
Do you like them? What sports do you play?
Hockey and baseball.
Hockey and baseball. You doing good in hockey? Yeah, you almost at the playoffs?
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you just come back from a tournament?
Last weekend.
It was local. We didn't go away. It was local.
It was local. How'd you do?
Good.
Yeah?
We won the championships.
What do you play?
Nice.
Goalie.
Goalie, I thought so.
Ooh, that's a lot of equipment.
He had quite the fan club there, too, didn't he?
What's your favorite subject in school?
I was wondering the same thing.
Fizette, fizette.
Isn't that your dad's name?
That's how I spell it.
Oh, you're so smart.
J Y M.
No, it's not.
Can we leave now? Is it, would that be okay? Did you say, "meeting adjourned"? Say, "meeting adjourned".
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Moved by nickel.